Alright, so it's shortly after seven o'clock on Monday, November nineteenth, twenty eighteen. I'll call the meeting to order and the first thing we'll do is stand for a moment of sound reflection. So we just ended our closed session and that was under section two thirty-nine, two B and F. And we just have one item for the rise report. Jennifer?
Resolve that council authorize the mayor and CEO of Truville to sign a conditional building permit agreement with one six zero zero nine seven eight Ontario Inc. Upon receipt and approval of a septic system design and plan from Art Boss Engineering to the satisfaction of the chief building official.
Uh, mover and secondor for that? Council Hendricks and Deputy Nurse Stockman, all those in favor? Opposed and not scared? Is there any declaration of particular interest or familiarity thereof? We have the minutes from our previous meeting, which is the November fifth, twenty eighteen. Go ahead, mover and secondor for approval. Council Sanders and Council McKinnon, all those in favor? Opposed and not scared? Okay, so we have a number of items for time events and delegations. At seven oh five, we have a public meeting for ten six two five towns in line. And then at seven fifteen, we have our financial auditors report for the twenty seventeen year. And then at seven thirty, we have a request to a building permit piece. I guess we can hop probably right into the first one for seven oh five. We had a motion to resolve at the public meeting to clear zoning bylaw amendment application ZBA fifteen, two thousand eighteen. Brenda Penne Voice at ten six two five towns in line, be opened at seven oh five P M. Council McKinnon and Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed and carried. And are the applicants already planning on being here? Alright, so I'll have Karen go through the report.
The planning item for council this evening is a report offering favorable consideration for application for extension of temporary group bylaw Z fifteen dash two thousand eighteen submitted by Peter Voice for Brenda Penne Voice. Uh, council may recall that an application for extension was made in two thousand and sixteen for a temporary period of time of three years. Uh, this bylaw expires March seventh of two thousand nineteen, but as the applicants are out of the country for the winter, they're applying for the extension at this time. The application proposes to extend the temporary zoning of a portion of the subject property, uh, which permits a golf driving range and associated learning center as a temporary use. The balance of the property will remain general agriculture. The portion affected by the temporary zoning is approximately six point three hectares and contains a trailer, a shed, and a gravel parking lot. Recreational facilities in the agricultural area may be considered for approval, provided compliance with minimum distance separation have been met and surrounding agricultural operations are not negatively impacted. Planning staff are satisfied that the continued use of the portion of this property is a golf driving range and a learning facility does not impact any of these operations. Thus, it satisfies satisfies the policies in the PPS and the county official plan. The application was circulated to the prescribed agencies as well as surrounding property owners and no comments or concerns have been received. Planning staff recommend that this Z fifteen, two thousand eighteen be approved. And for that council proceed with the first, second, and third reading of the implementing bylaw, which has been prepared for council this evening.
Thank you Karen, and before I go to questions or comments from the gallery or council, I do have to state the following. That the public meeting for the, um, the purpose of the following public hearing for Alimakap Council is to give the members of council as well as the general public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the application before council this evening. The purpose, or the public is advised that comments expressed in written material presented are a matter of public record available for full disclosure. If a person or a public body files an appeal, the decision made this evening to the local planning appeal tribunal without having made or written submission to council, the tribunal may dismiss the appeal. If you wish to be notified of the decision, please submit a written request to the township and assignment sheet as provided for your convenience on the table in front of me. Is there any, uh, questions from the gallery at all? Any questions or comments from council? Council Hendricks?
Uh, just a curiosity thing, I'm wondering why it's flag shaped and why the front piece isn't included in the zoning amendment? It just wasn't.
To be honest, that's what it has been, whether they initially requested that only that specific portion be, I'm not sure if it's it's able to be.
It is part of it, yeah, it is part of it, so I'm, um, I just thought it was a little odd, but it doesn't change the use of it, I don't think.
No.
I didn't, I didn't feel any concern, but I was just wondering if there was something going on there?
Any questions or comments to council?
That would be my s- my question as well. I'm just looking at the numbers here, seven forty-four acres versus fifteen point five. I don't know if that, that, if, if those numbers correspond correctly. If it's been like that before, then if it's been wrong before.
I was just continuing through with what they had requested.
Cause if you take a look at, at the aerial photograph, you can see that there is in that front part, there is a green there.
Well, it's probably, it's been there for years, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For quite a few years.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm with, with what's in there in here, I was curious why that yellow on that front part was, yeah. I am just saying that what's it gonna change, it's not gonna change anything. So.
Would it be a simple change to that, or are we just kind of moving along with?
Um, well, it would change the nature of the,
I guess.
Because what they're, the only thing that we're amending in the bylaw is we're amending the date of, um, the extension. Um, if that's something that council would like to take, to defer and I can take a look at and revise. Um, perhaps in the past it had been not used for that purpose and now it is, or, um, I'm not sure.
Council Sanders?
So if, if we do wanna change it, if, if it's just an extension, why don't we just give it an extension at this time? And when this comes up, if you could make that change, maybe or ask to make that change. But far not to sure right now with just an extension of the existing, leave well enough alone.
Nurse Stockman?
Yeah, I, I think what Cheryl is saying, you know, do the extension and maybe contact them to see if those lines are actually the lines they want. You know, and then if it needs to come back for minor adjustment, fine, and then with, but in principle, like, there's no problem with expanding it, but if we do it, we shouldn't have, you know, that it's got the proper area covered.
Okay.
There is another question or comments, we need a motion then to resolve the public meeting, the year zoning bylaw amendment application ZBA fifteen, two thousand eighteen, closed at seven eleven P M. Council Sanders and Council McKinnon, all those in favor? Opposed and not scared? And then we have the recommendation there, which is resolve the council approved the application for zoning bylaw amendment ZBA fifteen, two thousand eighteen for ten six two five towns in line to extend the temporary zoning of a portion of the subject property as the temporary agricultural T two A dash three zone, which permits golf driving range and association learning center as a temporary use. Balance of the property will remain general agricultural A zone and council proceed with the first, second, and third reading of the implementing bylaw. Council McKinnon? Deputy Nurse Stockman, all those in favor? Opposed and not scared? So, jumping to our correspondence. Yeah, if that's everything for our, okay, whatever you like. Okay, so our, our first section for correspondence, the, is upcoming seminars, conferences, and meetings. So the next meeting is the inaugural meeting, which is on Monday, December third, two thousand eighteen. And then, um, the regular meetings would be December tenth and then January seventh, two thousand nineteen. And so the first item for correspondence is from North Middlesex and it's mayor shipwreck retirement party, which is on November twenty eighth. And then item number two is the invitation for our Alimakap inaugural meeting, which is being held on December third. Item number three is from Towne Center and it's the retirement party for Mayor Mosley and that's on December fifth. And then item number four is the Thames Valley District School Board two thousand eighteen inaugural meeting, uh, being held on December eleventh, two thousand eighteen. And then the last one there is from Middlesex County and it's the inaugural meeting for December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen.
I would like to attend that.
The inaugural?
Mm-hmm.
And then the dinner as well, Jason?
Mm-hmm.
Is anyone else wanting to attend any of those items that you just picked?
Um, I was thinking about attending the, um, county one, but I have to confirm a couple things on the calendar.
Okay. So the next section there is the recommended readings. Item number six is from the Salvo Base of the Conservation Authority, it's the board of directors' agenda and minutes from November eighth, two thousand eighteen. Item number seven is from AMO and it's the MMKH to review of the current model resolution. Council McKinnon, you wanted to say something?
I'm so frustrated with my iPad.
Oh.
It just goes to loading report, loading report, loading report, so. It's just frustrating.
Yeah. Glad you said that.
Oh, here, I'll take it so we don't get it. Thank you.
And then item number eight is from AMO, as well as the cannabis retail regulations released.
Do we have anything to do with that at all? We don't have any stores or anything going up in Alimakap, are we?
I'm sure.
If, if I may, there will be a report coming on December the tenth meeting in regards to, um, there is an opt-in and an opt-out requirement made to be made by the township. So a full report is coming, uh, an opt-in or opt-out is due by January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen. So council will be getting a report on that prepared by planner and bash for the next meeting.
Okay. By the way, what's your mind?
We do have commercial opportunities, so, um, it is something that would fit into a retail commercial zone. So since we do have those within our township, we do have to make a decision on it.
And then the next section there is the actual required. Item number nine is from the township of McKeller and it's a resolution regarding the AMO and provincial discussions open to the public.
I was also filed, I thought it sounded like a vote of non-confidence in the AMO board.
Yeah. Okay, and then item number ten is from MMKH, it's the two thousand nineteen Roma Conference delegation request. The Council Hendricks will be attending.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'll let Catherine know before the, is it December that year we bird ends?
It actually ended last week.
Okay, okay, good, go. Alright.
Alright, so with that, we need a resolution to resolve the council receiving file correspondence item C C one to C C ten. Deputy Nurse Stockman and Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed and not scared? So, jumping to our financial auditors report, I believe we have.
Rob Foster? Yes.
I only see you once a year, so it's hard to remember, I'm sorry.
No worries at all. So I'm the partner in charge and Catherine's our, our manager in charge of the job, so she answers all the hard questions and I get all the glory. Uh, thank you for inviting us tonight. So we're gonna just go through some of the highlights of the financial statements. Um, feel free to stop me at any point if you have any questions or concerns. Um, we'll start out with our independent auditors report, uh, which is our page one. So this is, uh, basically our, our stamp on these financial statements. Um, it's a, a non, a, a non-qualified opinion, so that's what you're looking for. Uh, we didn't have any concerns with the, the financial statements as they were presented. So in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material aspects. The statement of financial position, the corporation of the township of Athlete Metcalf as of December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. And the statements of operations accumulated surplus, changes in net financial assets, the cash flows for the year that ended in accordance with Canadian accounting standards for public sector entities. And assuming that you approve these tonight, um, we will wait, uh, the use of tonight's approval. As we are required to audit, uh, to the, the, the council approved these statements. Our next page is our statement of financial position, uh, you might note as a balance sheet as well. And remembering this is as at December thirty-first, uh, two thousand seventeen, with comparables for December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. Uh, as you can see, cash is, uh, almost twice of what it was, uh, the year before. Uh, but you also note the line just below our investments are, um, pretty well down to zero. There's just a timing of, uh, G I C, uh, had moved basically from investments up into cash. So in total, the numbers are comparable, we'll close to long. Taxes receivable, um, we are, uh, up, uh, in receivables, so close to seventy-five thousand. Uh, I did, it was kind of consistently, uh, higher in each of the, you know, current prior, two years prior. Um, you know, obviously something you wanna to watch and can't always do a lot of votes, uh, receivables until we get past the three-year period, but, um, you know, it obviously is a little concerning to see the rise, but, uh, it's, it's, uh, just part of the economy and part of, of, uh, things to watch as we go forward. So not, not a concern at the moment, but, um, policies and procedures are in place to, uh, to look after anything that goes into three-year rule.
It is part of the problem, uh, because the assessment on the land is higher, so that makes the outstanding taxes higher in relationship?
It, it could be part of it, um, you know, if we look at proper, or individuals that are more consistently behind, as you, as you might say, um, their assessments have been going up, so that is a possibility of, of, or a function of it, I'm quite sure, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, cash receivable, uh, we're, we're seeing an increase there as well, and that's mostly relating to H S T. Um, there was both twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen H S T refunds. Uh, sixteen has been collected and seventeen, I think we're close to receiving that as well. Um, but there was two years worth of, uh, receivables there. So total, uh, financial assets of six point six million compared to five point nine here before. And there are financial liabilities, uh, you know, our accounts payable and accrued liabilities have, um, basically doubled year over year. Uh, but that is mostly a result of, um, kind of purchases late, uh, in December, one of them being, uh, the truck, as well as some capital work that was done. Not a concern as far as not paying on time, it just was a, a matter of the timing of when those purchases were made. Uh, your deferred revenues, so that's gas tax, rec land, um, building permits. Obviously very comparable year over year there, we can see the more detail when we get to note three, but that is, uh, what deferred revenues are, are made up of. And no new, uh, long-term debt taken on in the year, so, uh, we were able to pay down, um, that debt from a four oh four down to three eighty-three. Um, and again, we'll look at the, what makes up that debt when we get to, to note six. Uh, your landfill closure, um, that's basically an assessments done on, on what the cost will be, um, once those facilities are full and have to be maintained. And again, we'll get into some more detail of, of what makes those up and in, in the reserves that you've set, uh, set aside when we get to note four. So total financial liabilities of one point nine versus one point four. Uh, but when we look at the key, the, the net financial asset number, um, we are seeing a positive growth in that number, meaning a more prosperous, uh, municipality at four point six, almost four point seven million. Our non-financial assets, so as you recall, back, it's all the way back in two thousand and nine now that we started setting up, what we consider long-term capital assets, uh, for the municipalities. Um, we did see growth growing from seventeen point four to seventeen point six. Uh, we had about a million dollars of additions in the year, uh, mostly made up of the, uh, the truck purchase and, uh, Scottsmere Road rebuild, about six hundred fifty thousand there. And we had about eight hundred thousand of amortization, uh, that was booked as an expense, uh, when we get to the statement of operations. So total non-financial assets, uh, growing, uh, slightly year over year. Total accumulated surplus of two, twenty-two million, uh, we'll see the breakdown of that in note seven. That obviously isn't all current year type tax-related surpluses, the bulk of it being made up of tangible capital assets. Uh, so we don't have this big operating surplus that we need to deal with, so significantly less than that. Our next page is statement of operations and accumulated surplus. So here we have, uh, both budgeted, uh, and this is a P S A V adapted budget, I'll get to that for a second in, in a second. And then we have actuals for twenty seventeen and actuals for twenty sixteen. So the one thing that we, uh, do to convert the budget from what you would see or what you had prepared to conforming to these financial statements is basically we take any transfers to and from reserves, they come out as an expense or a revenue, which is what they are in your operating budget, and then we add in the amortization expense. So those are the, the main differences, uh, on the P S A V budget numbers, uh, versus, um, what you get prepared and approved at, at council. And note fourteen shows on an individual basis how those would change. So when we look at the revenues, um, you know, property taxation, uh, fairly consistent with what was expected of the budget. And, uh, just mostly S, uh, S O Ps being, uh, the reason, the reason that that being up year over year. Our user charges, um, both our severance applications and building current numbers were, were higher than budgeted and expected. That's why we're seeing our, our surplus there, uh, over the, the budgeted number. Local improvement levies mostly relate to municipal drain activities, so, um, that is, uh, basically items collected on behalf of a bene- benefiting landowners. Under your government transfers, um, we're seeing, um, fairly similar than what we expected budget to actual. Uh, we did have some, uh, road tax revenues there on the federal side, as well as, um, drainage grants, uh, being a little bit higher than anticipated on the provincial side. So overall total revenues, uh, five point, uh, three million versus four point eight. On our expense side, um, general government, uh, we are down a bit from budget there, that was mostly related to, uh, salaries and benefits. Uh, fire prevention, very comparable, um, protective, uh, services as well, comparable. Uh, transportation services, uh, we did, we were a little bit, uh, higher on the bridges and the higher top, uh, expenses. And then keeping in mind as well, these numbers, um, on the expense side do include a total of, of just under, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars of amortization expense. Uh, our, most of our other categories are again fairly similar to, to actual, uh, agriculture again being, um, mostly made up of municipal, uh, drain type work. So we do have a, a surplus on a P S A V basis being higher, uh, than, than our budgeted number from, uh, F four, four hundred and sixty-one thousand. And that adding to our cumulative surplus. Our next page, uh, so this is just change in, uh, net financial assets, so we basically take our surplus and we, uh, add back and subtract off, uh, non-cash related items or balance sheet transactions. So we did spend just over a million dollars in untangible capital assets. We had an amortization expense of, uh, just under eight hundred thousand. And I always like to reiterate, um, one of the, the reasons, um, that the provincial government and, and, and accounting bodies wanted, um, municipalities to start looking at the tangible capital assets is to consider the value being used up each year and comparing that to how, how many dollars you're putting in as a replacement. So, uh, in this particular case, you were adding a couple hundred thousand dollars more, uh, to your tangible capital asset base than what was depreciating. So I think that's what, um, provincial bodies and accounting bodies wanted to see, is ensuring that you aren't, um, in, in order to keep tax rates low, as an example, that you're eroding your capital in, in order to achieve that. So, um, again, yours are higher, so that's the positive direction that I think we're looking for. So total increase in net financial assets then, just over two hundred thousand. Our next page, statement of cash flows. Uh, so again, this is where we, we take our, our, our budget, uh, or our actual surplus, adding back our amortization, non-cash items, and any changes in, in the balance sheet and showing that we generated just, uh, under, uh, one point four million dollars of cash. Um, we also pulled cash out of our investments, uh, just on the timing. And then we had a million dollars of acquisitions paid twenty thousand dollars of debt. So that left a, a net increase in our cash of two point, uh, three million dollars year over year. We now get into our notes, so we get to speed up a little bit, I think. We'll find moving all the way forward to our note three, which is, uh, page ten of our financial statements. Uh, we talked a little bit about, um, our, uh, deferred revenues and what made those up. And I just, just quickly, we, we did skip over the notes, but there were no new, uh, notes, uh, and no disclosures in the year, uh, for your accounting policies. So, uh, just again, a breakdown of your deferred revenues, no significant changes, uh, there. Our next page is, uh, our landfill, uh, liability. I think probably the key ones to look at are in the, the bottom two paragraphs there. Our estimated liability at, uh, December thirty-first is a hundred and ninety-two thousand. And you have just over two, or you have exactly two hundred thousand, um, set aside towards that. So, uh, you are being diligent about, um, and just preparing for that, that liability as it, uh, as it, it will come due at some point in the future. Our note five, so this is just a breakdown of those tangible capital assets, uh, their original costs. Uh, we'll see in the opening plus any additions on the year. And then our second, uh, kind of grouping down is the related, uh, accumulated amortization or the expensing of those assets. And then looking at our, our bottom paragraph, that being the, the net book value, uh, the difference between the original cost and, uh, the depreciation book to date, um, coming up to the seventeen point six billion.
Council Hendricks?
Um, yeah, uh, what's the difference between infrastructure buildings and general buildings?
Um, so infrastructure would tend to be, uh, anything road or, uh, waste water, water, um, so if you had, uh, pumping stations, those type of things would have potentially building related to them. Or your general would be more of your, your this building and, and that type of, um, type of buildings.
This building, okay. That's what I, that's what I figured. Yeah.
Uh, so, the next page of, uh, note five is just the, the exact same thing, but for the previous year. Our next, uh, page, uh, note six, so this just outlines your, your total, uh, outstanding debt, uh, less the portion that relates to tile drains, so that's technically the municipality is responsible for those, uh, payment of those drains, but it is, uh, expected that the related landowners will, um, pay for those drains. Um, so we would net that back off, leaving the liability related specifically to the municipality of three hundred and eighty-three thousand. Uh, I like, do like to mention that that is a user charge based, not tax-based, so there is no tax-based debt, uh, that is relating to the curb and sewer, um, operation. Our next page, note seven, so that is a breakdown of that accumulated surplus. So our general surplus, so just under one point three million. What we still need to collect from benefiting landowners is one point five million. That will be municipal drain type related costs. What we have invested in our tangible capital assets and what we have in our reserves. And then we would subtract off of that any unfunded liabilities, so that being the landfill and the long-term debt. The landfill is funded through reserves, but the reserves are up above, so that's why it's shown in a particular manner. So giving us a total accumulated surplus of twenty-two million. And a breakdown of those reserves below. When we, if we were to factor out your water and sewer, which is obviously can't be mixed with tax, you still do have sufficient reserves there that's in excess of one year's worth of, of tax assessment. So that's, if you kind of think of a way of looking at financial health, that's a very healthy reserves that have been set aside for emergency if need be. So again, positive position there. I think that's kind of the main notes that I wanted to go over. I guess if we went to page seventeen, note thirteen, we do break down the expenditures by, by classification there. So by, instead of by department, by salaries and materials and compare those year over year. I think the highlights that I wanted to hit on, again, I'm happy to take any questions if there are any, any additional questions.
Yes, number of questions along the way, is there any other questions from council or councilman?
Under note nine, the pension agreements, is that not a liability to the municipal authority?
So, so this is an owner's based pension that, that the employees have. And as a whole, there is, I guess we'll call it a deficit in, in funding. You have some small percentage of that, you know, it's impossible for us to really say what your percentage is, but technically the municipality would be responsible for that deficit. But actuarially, they're assuming based on assets and, and the overall age groups of the employees that there is an opportunity to recover from that deficit. It's not to a point, because I'm sure you remember, we lacked enough years that there was over holidays and then all of a sudden they went the other way and we had, we did have to put some money in. And, and so I think right now, their, their feel, the actuaries feel they're in a position that it will recover itself as investment, interest rates go up and, and we start to make a little bit more on those, let's call it safer assets that pension plans invested basically. So, but yes, if it was to stop tomorrow, the municipality would have some percentage of that deficit that it would be responsible for.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions at all? Thank, thank you so much.
Um, we also have distributed the audit findings letter in the lead, which is basically, so this is our statement on the financial position. That's our comments on controls of the municipality and whether we had any concerns. No concerns with controls, no concerns with any non-cooperative action with, with management. It was a very clean process. Again, thank you for managing and helping us to get this complete. And hopefully we look forward to working with you again.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
In case we just do have one motion, it's resolved that council receive the two thousand seventeen financial statements as presented by Grants dot N's LLP. That the mayor be directed to sign the audit findings on behalf of the attached by our necap and that the CEO treasurer be authorized to sign management representation letter. Council McKinnon and Council Sanders, all those in favor, close and that's carried.
Sorry, I was a little long-winded there.
No, that's okay. The next delegation for seven thirty hasn't shown up yet, so we'll get.
Next again.
So are you going through our staff reports? Because I'm assuming we can just deal with the delegations during the staff reports. Actually, before we do that, we have the committee minutes. We had a emergency control group meeting on November thirteenth. And I did make note of that, we made a resolution that council receive the November thirteenth, twenty eighteen emergency control group minutes as presented. Council Hendricks and Council McKinnon, all those in favor, close and that's carried. And now we'll go into the staff reports, and we have the first ones from our chief building official, Jeff Henry.
Yeah, I have number one, just the permit list for permits issued between August twenty ninth and November thirteenth, any questions on that?
It says September thirteenth on the front page.
Oh, sorry, August twenty eighth.
Questions on the permit list? So a motion resolved that council accepts the building permit issue group four as presented by the chief building official. Jeff Henry Stockman and Council Hendricks, all those in favor, close and that's carried.
And then I'd love to, if we received the Grace King Reform Church, maybe an application for building permit for twelve foot by twenty foot storage shed at two seven nine six eight Kerwood. I'm authorized that being assumed November first. So on behalf of the Grace King Reform Church, on the growth permits, the letter request to waive the building permit fee at one hundred and sixty-six twenty for the storage shed. And basically it's less than fifty-five square meters, doesn't require any sort of design qualification or anything like that. It's pretty straightforward, just provide you with breakdown, basically two inspections on a building of that nature. Just basically, first one would be probably pouring slab. And the second one would be kind of exterior finish, framing all done at once. So basically roughly two inspections, providing a cost breakdown for that. And then in two thousand and seven, we did receive a request to waive the fee for the sun shade at the Allen School, which was approved by council at the time. When the church, St. Paul's Church was damaged by the car, the vehicle there. Again, that was insurance, there was no request at all at that time to waive the fee on that. You know, basically the permit fee just to recover costs, expense, you know, for the township. I moved and we waived the fee.
I have a second.
That's second by Council Sanders, second by Council McKinnon, any discussion at all? All those in favor, voters and that's carried. Excellent, that was easy. All right, so our next report from our CEO treasurer, Catherine.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. The first report is in regards to the accounts approval list. It's provided to council for the period of November two to November fifteen, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of three hundred and nine thousand, thirty-three dollars and twenty-three cents.
Any questions on the accounts? Council Hendricks.
On page five of twenty, you have computer support, financial pro, is that training for a new employee? Or is that new software? It's under, again.
Page four on the paper company, seventy-two hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Seventy-two hundred, yeah.
That is our financial program, that's our annual renewal fee for our support through the U S T O I campaign.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, Council Hendricks?
Mm-hmm.
Detective Stockman?
Uh, on page six, fire, the bottom one, fire MTO shared call up four hundred and sixty-five. I thought we got paid for going to a, an MTO call up.
If I may. Uh, we did get paid for it, Strathroyd care up also attended the call on the MTO property. Under the MTO rules, we can't both apply for the call up to the same location, for the same police report. So Strathroyd care up was out of luck when it came to applying, we had applied first, so we got our full amount for it. So the two fire chiefs agreed that they would split the amount. We had an equal number of, of pieces of equipment response. So instead of, of Strathroyd going without because they responded as well due to the call up location, we split the cost.
Okay, okay.
Just quit, split the revenue off the cost.
Uh, on, for, for Jeff, on roadways, page nine, the fuel tank repairs on the grader one. And then the window on the back hole. And then all the walkers.
Uh, to start, Mr. Mayor, the grader, we had a, a, basically a running problem with it. And after diagnostics, it turned out we had fuel, or dirt in the tank. So it came down to just over the years, that's the older grader, so over the years, we've just had a buildup of fine material in the fuel tank. And, and it was, basically, yes. Uh, the window in the back hole, unfortunately, during operation, a culvert that we were taking over the ground came up and caught the window. Operator wasn't hurt, but, but did break the one back in the back hole. And as walkers, basically this, that was the bulk of the gravel for the two blocks that went down last at the end of October, or first of November. Basically, that's the bulk of all the invoices that are going to be coming through. There's a couple of other ones, smaller ones coming through, but that's the, that's the main, the main bulk of the job on launch.
Okay, so basically the question then, and I did some number crunching, I've been doing some number crunching on that one. Uh, we're a little bit over by John on what we originally anticipated.
And it did, probably a little bit, yeah, about twenty percent is what I dropped that out there. But then we weren't able to do as much ditching later on, so we ended up getting high-os in to do some of that. That's correct, there's a little bit more push with high-os on the ditching because of the wet weather. And, and a little bit more, part of the cost increase wasn't so much on the gravel, but on the, the road widening. The middle block was considerably out of, out of straightness going down the road, looked like a snake going down the road, which doesn't show up on the plans until you're actually standing out there digging the road up. And so when we have to widen the road one way or the other, concerning the block more material. So part of the, part of the extra expense is in the road widening portion of it.
But we have a better road now because of.
We have a center road.
If I may, with the Northax inquiry in regards to the grader, they also, besides repairing the window, there's also repairs to the parking brakes and the return to date wasn't working. So they did several repairs and was it just the window, it was through the miscellaneous?
Correct, there was, yeah, and due to, and again, I have, I've talked to the guys about it. You have a mobile repair unit to come out and it's, it's with all, you're, you're into a large expense just to get a repair, mobile repair company out. And so I asked the guys when they do come to make sure that there's a list for the mechanic. So yes, there was a, some minor electronics stuff they were having issues with, with the back hole. So it just was, but the windows what triggered the, the main reason for that issue.
Thank you.
Council Sanders, any questions, Council McKinnon, any questions?
No.
No.
My turn, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion resolved that council approved the camp listings for the period of November second to November fifteenth, twenty eighteen, in the amount of three hundred and nine thousand, thirty-three dollars and twenty-three cents as presented. Council Hendricks and Council McKinnon, all those in favor, voters and that's carried.
Okay, so the next report is in regards to the site plan control and conditional building permit agreement for two nine four one Naperton Drive, which council received a report in closed session earlier and has provided direction that the CAO and mayor sign the agreement upon submission of the required, or the septic system. So as soon as we receive the septic system report, then we'll be able to proceed.
And that's what it called, is that the, is that the system report?
Yes, yes.
Well, that'd be exact motion for the lab.
So the motion was resolved that council authorize the mayor and CEO treasurer to sign the conditional building permit agreement with one six zero zero nine seven eight Ontario Inc. Upon receipt and approval of a septic system design and plan from Marvaz Engineering to the satisfaction of the chief building official. Last report was the, a quick financial update, which includes the tax collection as of October thirty-first and the payroll report for October of two thousand and eighteen.
Are there any questions on payroll or financial report? Motion resolved that council accept the financial report including the October twenty eighteen payroll as presented by the CEO treasurer. Council Sanders and Detective Stockman, all those in favor, all those in favor. Okay, so for staff reports, we have Jeff Cole here, and I assume he has a couple things to let us know.
I do have one, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make sure that everybody's aware that the nature garage now has water. It is actually non-sulfur and very good condition with a good flow. So there you are back full at the nature garage. So the next step will be to decommission the well, which will, will go through the Aspies and Strathroyd to do. We'll work with them and provide whatever service we can, but we need a licensed person to do that. They're busy, I'll be honest, it took them, it took them a little bit to get to our well. So I'm hoping to have the decommissioning of well done before the end of the year. That was the plan, so we'll, we'll move ahead for that, but it's good news on the well, so. I guess the other thing, just one more announcement, the signs are up on pipe for the speed limit reduction. So I'm sure there'll be some, maybe some comments come through, but everybody should see, see the physical signs now are up. Melwood, we haven't quite got to, I was hoping by tonight they would have been up, but due to the weather last week, we never got to Melwood yet, so. The plan was to have them up this week also.
Most of all, Detective Stockman?
Uh, I see that we're into October fiftieth, we're a school road.
Yeah, it's real hot. I've been checking a couple of times because we keep getting, it was supposed to be this, this afternoon. You can, I don't want to say you can actually drive through now, but because the road is still technically closed, we are not going to remove the snow because the signs are still up. But I feel every indication is that there, it's just a matter of pulling the signs down, so. Hopefully it will be soon.
Well, I see that they haven't even got one side down on the Kerwood Road one.
They're still talking late December on that, which I'm sure plowing snow through there will be an interesting, because obviously we can't, you can't have the snow going over, so there's not a lot of room there for, for snowing. It's interesting. Let the county, let the county do with that.
Yeah.
You have questions for Jeff Cole? Is there anything for other business?
Yeah, yeah. Ellen, Ashley, you draw best card.
So we actually have two cards here. We have, uh, one card from Ellen, and it's, uh, a card just, uh, thanking us for, I'm assuming he had the party that he had and then everything else with the year, so I'll pass that along. And then we also have another card here from, uh, the Stratford Lodge Auxiliary, and it's, uh, with the donation for, uh, in memory of Carolyn.
Merle.
What?
Clover.
Clover, sorry, yes. That's not that one, we can go backwards. Do you have anything else for other business adults?
No, it's.
You, you go ahead.
Oh, right, yeah, you're coming, you're here. Well, I just, I just wanted to, uh, after the last meeting I was at home and, and, cause I had brought up the newsletter and I must have been having like just a really stupidity day because I got home and everything I wanted for information was on the website, so I apologize if I made staff feel like they weren't doing their job. Everything I needed to know was on the, uh, township website, so I was very heartened to see that.
That's it. Yeah, Deputy Stockton?
Uh, remember today's service, uh, excellent attendance and very well presented, uh, as usual, just it's, I, I'm thinking there were probably a hundred and fifty people there, if not more, and, uh, went very well. One question though, the township flag is pretty ratty.
Yes.
Uh, wondering when we're going to get, uh, the new flags to put on the.
We're sourcing out someone to make them. We've been looking, but, um, the former supplier is out of business, so we're looking for a new supplier, I guess. And we did offer to, uh, provide our flag from here for the day.
Oh.
And the by chief declined.
And I, I do have something to, to say yet, but, uh, I was wondering about the bylaws, uh, their remote banking thing. When I got reading through that, I don't know, I think I'd rather just go in hand deliver it. Just, just my thoughts. Like I know we approved it quite a while ago, but when I got read, I didn't read through the whole thing, but I got, uh, a long way through and, uh, I don't know if I'm comfortable with all the exclusions they have.
Legal.
Yeah.
That's my thing.
I was going to suggest, uh, given that Council Clerk coming on has a lot of banking experience, if we could defer it until she comes on to look at it and give us the pros and cons, along with Kathy maybe provide a report on the pros and the cons of it, of the liberal agreement.
Okay, we can simply just, yeah.
Yeah, but we were just looking forward to getting it going, so that we can get it running up and running as soon as possible. So we deferred it since council agreed in April or May, and we're just, finally, we have a staff person here that's able to, uh, work on it and get it running, so.
Yeah, I agree with Nick on, when I read, uh, I was a little concerned about a lot of exclusions and keeping the paper for a hundred and twenty days and, you know, so I just thought, well, with, with, uh, Council Clerk's experience, I wish she might be able to say, perfect, good, good thing to have, or.
If I may, that's what happens with your current checks when we take them to the bank, the bank only keeps them for a hundred and twenty days, and then they're, they're destroyed. Yes, and that's what our, our image required, our scanner here will do is do the imaging here and as opposed to taking it to the, to the credit union.
Say that again.
So our scanner will do the exact same thing, it's, it's a scanner through, uh, face to, in a station, which is a supplier.
And it will do the exact same thing as what the liberal does with our deposit when we take it to the bank.
Because it will get scanned through and it will do the reporting for us.
I guess the reason I'd rather not, but I guess maybe I'm a little more old school, but, uh, I, uh.
We are.
Uh, you know, if, if staff feels that it's, uh, more effective, efficient than that, that I can go. Well, we agreed to it already, but when I saw the actual fine print, I, yeah.
It doesn't spell out the cost exactly, though, it does at the agreement. It leaves it in these tiny little letters and I was having to close my iPad and open it and load it up.
It is ten dollars per deposit, just the P, yes.
What? No way.
It costs us more than that to send someone to the bank, to make a deposit.
Ten dollars per deposit?
Yeah, but that, that would be taking, I mean, not a huge number.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not per check, no, it's per deposit, so it would be, we could deposit twice a week. Our staff does not need to leave the office, so we have pro- productivity is increased because otherwise we send someone to the bank for forty-five minutes to drive in and drive back plus mileage to go.
Oh, okay, so you're, you're.
So it saves us, and the overall picture, it saves us.
Right.
Yes.
I thought it was per.
We can do an unlimited number of checks, we can deposit up to three hundred and ninety dollars per day as well.
Oh, well, yeah.
So our tax time, instead of following you in three times, sending someone to the bank three times a day with all the deposits, we will be able to do all.
I agree, I agree, I agree, it's good, it's good. But if it was per check, I'd say.
No, not per check, it would not be astronomical per check.
That wouldn't work at all. So I think we, we kind of straightened it up, so I'm assuming we'll leave that, the bylaw, for when we go to the bylaws. Okay, so anything else for other business? Deputy Stockton?
I thought for a while how I would do this, my first thought was to just say thanks. But knowing how efficient the meeting Curtis runs, I may never have the opportunity to speak again. In the past ten years, there have been highs and lows, both as a collective group and personally. Almost everything with the wind turbines was a low. Another low was having to try to resolve an ongoing conflict between two individuals, one elected and one management. Building of the new fire hall, designed for the most part by the firemen and with their sweat equity, with most of our portion of the cost in reserves, would be my number one high point. Serves not only as a fire hall, but a multi-use facility for many community groups. It may not be green, but it did not cost a lot of green to build it, and our guys still know how to back up their fire trucks. I just mentioned reserves, and actually, uh, Rob mentioned it as well tonight. Our municipality has had recent councils that have placed a high priority on longer term financial stability. They have put funds into reserves for known future expenditures, so that when those purchases or projects are initiated, a portion of the dollars can be taken from those, these reserves, meaning more stable tax rates for all our residents. A healthy financial position of the township is therefore also a high point. Were there frustrations? Yes. Sometimes I think molasses flows quicker in January than some of the processes in the township. It may be internal or external, or a combination of both. To have it take three years for municipal drainage work to take place after flooded basement during a significant rain event seems like a very long time. Personally, both lows involve county employees. Being informed that a county employee was considering filing a harassment complaint because I had asked for an explanation on how a hundred and thirty-four meters plus fourteen point four meters equals ninety-one meters surprised me to say the least. Everything related to the Strathmere Lodge declaration of surplus and severance was by far the most disappointing of my ten years on council. Having been involved as operator manager of the Strathmere Lodge farm for Middlesex Sound and Crop for thirty-one years, and not once having an opportunity to ask questions or make comments in a public forum, everything was behind closed doors, was very disturbing. And to have the individual in charge of the file not always tell the truth left me with significantly less respect for the county and the office. Missing only two council meetings in ten years is a personal high. The first in May of twelve, at the height of the turbine episode, was intentional. And the second was this year, first meeting in June, when my fellow employees took their retirement package. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the residents of Abilene Metcalf as an elected for the past ten years. Thanks to the citizens of this great municipality for the opportunity. Thanks also to my fellow elected, fellow councilman, and all the township staff. Thanks.
Good garage, Deputy Stockton? And I've had the pleasure of working with you the last eight years, and it's very, uh, very incredible, so.
I can't talk, huh?
I wasn't sure.
I, I'm not much for letter writing, but I do want to say a few things.
Yeah.
If I may. There was a few people, you know, I'm now council back in nineteen seventy-six. I was on council four years then, I really enjoyed it, and I had a problem, I had health issues, so I had to retire. So I said, that's enough for a while. Then back in two thousand, Johnny Milton approached me and says, you should run for council, so I did. So I was under John. And I served for three years that time, and Adrian De Bruin and I, and I never went out and campaigned because I really didn't want to go back again. And they didn't beat, my kids didn't even vote for me. They don't vote for me, guys. And they didn't beat me by seven votes. And I went over to the house and graduated, mom was actually quite a happy. Then back a few years ago, a few people approached me, yeah, Gerald, and I said to your wife, you know, I'm, I'm getting older, I retired, I got time, I need a bit extra money. I, I should maybe run again. So I threw a bunch of envelopes around the township, yeah. Gerald was a counselor one more time. And I thought about this many times this spring because I did really honestly enjoy this group. That's probably the best group. I sat on council different, three different times, and I probably enjoyed this the most. So, you know, and, and I, I do honestly believe we had a really, really good group. Well, Nick, you need Nick, across the Ts and the Is. Of course, you wanted five feet more, two feet, who the hell cares? I told you to TV off. No, turn it off. I'm not done yet. Turn that thing off. Anyway, and then you got Betty Ann, and she's been in the business for thirty years. And yeah, she fits, and Mary, we all fit. I thought it was a great, great group. So I want to get up and shake everybody's hand, and I have a calm for three twenty. And then I will go home in peace, and I, I might cry at the end, but I'll try not to. Jeff, Matt, you told me the other night you were involved for fifteen years. I can't believe it was fifteen years, time flies, and obviously you must be doing something right, because I haven't heard too many people bitch about the building inspector. Most times, that asshole or that guy, we don't like him, but you must be doing the fifty-month work. Mary Ann, you should have done what I should have done, because your calendar is always over full. So if you wouldn't have ran for council again, you would have extra time for your husband, your grandkids, and you can do what you like. But now you created another headache, your, your book is always full. But anyway, good luck, you're a good counselor. Jen, an asset, nice to see you. I think it was great. You're a good, I think you're a good, good, I'm gonna miss you. I am. Curtis?
Yes.
I said, I had three or four different greaves or mayors, and I always said, and I'll say it again, you were probably the best guy to run the best meeting I ever sat on there. And keep up the good work, I'm glad you're back.
Thank you so much.
Kathy, good lady, you're the boss. I gotta tell you a little story, because I, okay, makes me angry the other night, and I, you remember what I said? I'm the boss here tonight, and what I say goes. And guess what happened the other day? There was a little card in the mailbox with a note and a little badge, and it says, I'm the boss. And guess who sent it?
Not me.
Sue, Sue, uh, Clark. Saw this in the store, and I thought you were right, and I thought I would send it to you. So you're the boss, delegate lots, you've got lots of help. Make sure you sit, put your legs up in the air, and do it, and do it right, otherwise you have to do it again. Pleasure.
Thank you.
Nick, I've been trying to help you out for years for one department, and now you're retired, fully? Surely, to goodness, if you need a hand, call me, I've been trying for thirty years to help you, but you just don't listen. Anyway, good luck, pleasure working. You were driving, this is especially, she drove me for a year. She ran for council again, and she wanted me to run, I said, I'm getting a little old. And I thought, well, Mary Ann, maybe you're getting a little too, but by the way, if you happen to be at Strathmere Lodge, before you finish your four-year tour, and if you can't drive, call me, and I will pick you up there and bring you to the meeting, and if you can't, if your mind is going through, then if you can't finish your tour, that Nick or I will fill in for you. We'll finish it, okay? Thank you. Very good. Jeff, I have one comment, I saw you walk through the door, when we hired, when you were, were at the meeting, who we're gonna hire, and as soon as you walked through that door, and I told Herda and him, and I said, that's our man, and you are good, and staff loves you, I know what to do, they tell me all the time, keep it up, we're glad to have, we're lucky to have you. Thank you. Now I'm done. I'm not gonna worry more than think, and I will miss you, actually.
The feeling is mutual.
Yes.
We will miss you. Whatever went through here, I said, came out here with Gerald, and you knew exactly where you stood. And you always spoke your mind, and as he said, this group here has never really, we don't always agree with each other, but we always walk out speaking to each other. And, uh, I for one have appreciated that for the last four years.
No, excellent, counsel. Anyway, no.
Excellent. Before I go to the bylaw, is there anything else further? Um, all this, uh, I just have one thing, we had our, uh, county council meeting last Tuesday, and, uh, we had the optimist, uh, youth were there, and actually, uh, Councilor Henders was there, uh, what was it called? As an optimist member and chaperone, is that what we called it? I don't know. Uh, to, uh, they did a mock meeting at the beginning of the council meeting, I think that went really well, and then, uh, they stayed for a portion of the meeting. Um, and then at the end of the county council meeting, we had the long-term service award, so, um, and you can go through that, uh, list in the council agenda from last Tuesday, but there is some members, uh, some employees, all, um, been employees at the county for forty years, so I think that really, you know, says something. I think the majority of the people that do reach that, you know, thirty-five, forty, or forty-five, or even fifty, is, uh, more actually the, uh, employees at Strathmere Lodge, so, yeah. Um, and then, uh, following that, there's a, a dinner with the long-term service award, uh, individuals, and then that's also the time when, um, county councillors indicate if they're whether, whether they're standing for, uh, warden for the upcoming year. And, uh, I'm excited to announce that I'll be letting my name stand for, uh, warden for. And I'm excited to announce that I'll be letting my name stand for Warden for 2019, and the other councillor that has put their name for it, as well as Joanne Baner-Hay from Strathrock AirDoc. So if you are able to attend on, on December thirteenth at the county building, that would be greatly appreciated, so. So with that, we'll move into our bylaws. Resolve that all three readings be given to bylaw number fifty-eight, two thousand eighteen, which is the legal agreement corporate remote deposit capture and online banking. Bylaw number fifty-nine, two thousand eighteen, Sony bylaw number Z B A fifteen, two thousand eighteen, which is the voice. And then bylaw number sixty, two thousand eighteen, confirm council proceedings, and the bylaws be signed by the mayor and clerk, and the corporate seal be attached. Deputy Stockman and Counselor Sanders? Okay, all those in favor, opposed, and carried? And before I do the adjournment, I just want to kind of echo what Counselor McKinnon already said, I've really enjoyed the last four years, I'm looking forward to the next four years, but I think this is, I, I don't know if the, the next council term can kind of live up to this, the expectations that we've done around the council wore shoes this last four years. I've really enjoyed this, the last four years, so hopefully we have the newcomers will fill the seats, even though I know there's some big, pretty big shoes to fill, so.
You got to do a good little try.
I, I certainly do, so. So, motion resolved, the meeting be adjourned at eight thirteen PM for the last meeting of the council term. Counselor Sanders and Deputy Stockman, all those in favor, opposed, and carried?